Mr. Veder, roll call please.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Agsman.
Here. Take a moment of silence to reflect on actions. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the agenda received as proposed or amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. It's our honor now to recognize the Columbus High State Champion Girls Volleyball Team. If we could have individuals, the players, stand up and introduce themselves. If you'd come forward and maybe we could have a little overview of how the season went.
Girls, may please stand.
There we go.
Thank you, everyone, for welcoming us to recognize volleyball.
We appreciate if you'd come over by the mic so the public can hear you.
Thank you, everyone, for welcoming us to the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. At this time, I'd like to ask each of the girls to come forward and to share their name and grade. And then, one of our seniors, Anna Ortiz, will share some information on our season.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Senna, and I'm a senior this year.
I'm Lily Krishnensen, and I'm a senior.
I'm Kate Shannon, and I'm a junior.
I'm Hannah Closton, and I'm a senior.
I'm Avery Kroll, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Megan Knutson, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Emma Purdy, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Emily Surma, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Sydney Schultz, and I'm a junior.
And I'm Julia Benda, and I'm a junior.
I'm Anna Ortiz, and I'm a senior. And we'd like to thank you all for letting us come here to celebrate our victory. A few highlights of our season. We went thirty-five and eight this year, which one of our goals was to be under ten losses. So, we're really proud of that achievement. We got first place in three tournaments, which was also one of our goals. And we've just had a really successful season. We had to play in the conference championship for the first time. Even though we lost, it was still an honor to be in that championship. We played against a team and hung up with them that actually won the two-way state finals. So, we're really proud of that. And obviously, our first state championship for our school. So, really, really proud of that. And we'd like to thank, on behalf of our team, like to thank our coach and everyone and our families who pushed us to get where we were. And we couldn't have done it without all their support. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
We do have a plaque. And Representative want to come up? And we present this to the 2017 State Volleyball Champions, Columbus High School.
And we'd also like to do a group photographs. If you would all come, kind of stand in front of the podium here and group yourselves together.
I think with all the underclassmen, we probably have a good opportunity for you to be here next year.
Coach, you need to get, coach. Coach. There you go. You guys are used to it.
Yeah.
That's good. Are you ready? I think, hey, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time in our meeting to take public comments for any item that is not on the agenda. If you have an item you wish to address the board that is not on the agenda, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Item A is approval of expenditures for the county.
The county's expenditures this week total three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seventy-two dollars and seven cents. Three-two-four, zero-seven-two, point-zero-seven. That includes about a hundred and fifty thousand on the radio project and fifty-five thousand in CIP projects for conservation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Next, item B is approve the expenditures for Country View Facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Six-seven, eight-four-eight, point-one-seven, uh, point-eight-seven. Excuse me.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Resolution approved. Item five is receive project updates from department heads elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
Our maintenance crews are out cutting brush this week in the good weather. And we are also doing some repairs to the Cedar-Wopsy River Bridge. So, this is the same bridge that we'll be replacing in just a few years. Some of the expansion joints are causing some issues right now. I wanted to let you know that we have received a preliminary engineering report from our structural engineering consultants on that East Bennington Road Bridge. This was the structure that we had to close about a month and a half ago. We are looking at that and will be coming back to you soon for recommendations in how you wish to proceed with that. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's see, any? We move on to minutes approved of November twenty-first.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item seven is the consent agenda.
So moved.
By a single resolution. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Excuse me. White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Resolution approved. Item eight, reports. An update from Ben Delagardel, Urban Services, reference the Washburn Sanitary Sewer.
Morning, Ben.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to update for two months' worth. It will be September and October. First, I want to take care of some old business. Frank, last time I was here, you asked me for pump inventory number. Normally, I give that to you. Fourteen pumps, good and ready to go. One of those is a brand-new Extreme pump. One of those is a rebuilt Extreme pump. And twelve of those are rebuilt two-thousand series pumps. For September, we did monitoring of water flow and lagoon cell levels. Submitted the MOR to the DNR for August operations. Collected a quarterly influence sample and submitted to the lab as required by the MPDES permit. We mowed the lagoon on nine fifteen. We had six locates and one service call in September. Moving on to October. Again, we did monitoring water flow and lagoon cell levels. Submitted the MOR to the DNR. Collected a pre-drawdown sample in preparation of our discharge. Mowed the lagoon area on ten fifteen. Started the fall discharge on October twenty-second. After that, we collected a drawdown sample as required by the DNR on ten twenty-five, third day of discharge. Maintained the discharge through the end of the month. We had four locates and one service call in October. Any questions? Concerns?
And Board members?
Thank you, Ben.
One thing I do have for you guys is, is there an update with the fats, oil, and grease issue? I think it's been four or five months since we've talked about that.
Update in regards to what?
We have inspections happening in town.
As far as I know, Rory, they've been doing inspections, correct?
Yeah, the local inspector for Sioux-Warland has been out to these two establishments out there.
And we've been doing it for the last few years, ever since we had a problem.
Okay.
You were just asking for an update standpoint.
Yeah, basically, to make sure it's still going.
Once you get contact of the individual that's doing the inspections, you can talk to him directly then.
Okay. I'll get ahold of Rory.
Did the, get the fence repaired?
It's not repaired. I had to order the correct fence that looks the same. I contacted Rory to try and find some that the county was already in possession of. We didn't have any. So, I did order some. So, as soon as I have that, it'll get fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is a motion that the recorders report and fee collection from Sandy Smith, County Recorder, for the period of October first, two thousand seventeen, through October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, be received, placed on file with the county auditor. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Have contracts and agreements. A is resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and Allen Hospital Health for discount rates for pre-employment screening be approved and direct chair to sign for same as recommended by Debbie Bunger, Human Resource Director.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Item B, resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Janesville for resurfacing Waverly Road from Sycamore Road to eight-hundred-and-eighty-five feet north at a cost of not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars be approved and direct. The chair to sign for same is recommended by Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Kathy, any additional information on this?
Sure. This is a portion of our resurfacing of Waverly Road. Next year should take place in the summer of 2018. We will be resurfacing from the Cedar Falls city limits to the Janesville city limits. As you know, we share approximately thirteen-hundred linear feet with them. That northernmost portion, we share with them. This was an agreement which their city council agreed that they would participate in not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars. Our estimates are eighteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars for their portion of the work.
Is there, when you're resurfacing in the county, you're adding additional three feet onto the paving?
Yes. So, on our portion, we will be, we now have a three- or four-foot gravel shoulder along Waverly Road. We will be paving three-feet shoulder on each side of the road. When we get to the Sycamore Street, we will stop that paving of the shoulders and we will just pave the main line. The City of Janesville did not want to participate in that portion of the project.
Okay, thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Item C is a resolution at the land lease between Blackhawk County and Frederick Webber for three-year lease agreement in the amount of thirty-three, or three dollars and thirty-three cents for county-owned lots formerly known as six-six-one-nine Sunnyside Street and Laporte be approved. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Item D is resolution at the land lease between Blackhawk County and Frederick Webber for a three-year lease agreement in the amount of three dollars and thirty-three cents for county-owned vacant lots. And this is formerly known as six-six-one-one Sunnyside Street, Laporte, be approved and direct chair to sign for same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Item E is resolution at the land lease between Blackhawk County and Frederick Webber for the three-year lease agreement for the amount of three dollars and thirty-three cents be approved and direct chair to sign for same. This is at six-six-one-two Sunnyside Street, Laporte City. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Agsman.
Yes. Item ten, other business. Motion to direct the county finance director to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five a.m. on Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the boardroom two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Warland, Iowa, on the proposed fiscal year eighteen budget amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those, please, all those in favor, please indicate. Aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carried. Our next item, under other business, is item B. Any discussion options for Whedon Road?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, again, County Engineer. And I wanted to go over some of the options for Whedon Road with you. I know Supervisor Schwartz had asked for some historical perspective of this road, as well as what the Code of Iowa says about how we can reclassify or designate our roads. So, I have some of that information. I first wanted to present what the Code of Iowa says about the different types of roads in our road system. And technically, if you look in the Code of Iowa, they're called area class, area service classifications. And there's three area service classifications. Here in Iowa, there's Class A, or excuse me, Area Service A, Area Service B, and Area Service C. Area Service A roads, those are typical county roads. Those are maintained with all, in conformance with all standards and specifications. We build those specifications. The signing is meeting specifications, pavement markings. The next step below that would be Area Service B. And that, of course, would be a lesser level of maintenance. And I'll get into more of what that means in just a minute here. And then, finally, Area Service C roads. Those are roads that can be restricted access primarily with a gate. And then, we can designate who has keys to that gate. And the Iowa Department of Transportation, they give us, they give local agencies, cities and counties, we get our guidance from the Code of Iowa through them, through an instructional memorandum. So, there's very good guidance from the Iowa DOT on what it takes to change these service levels, as well as what it takes to vacate a road here in Iowa. So, just very briefly, Area Service B roads, they have to be designated by an ordinance or a resolution. They're required to have appropriate warning signs at the beginning of the road, for example. And this is a common example of what that signing can look like. And these would be put up at both ends of that road. So, there's no regular maintenance performed on Area Service B roads. There's no blading, there's no ice removal. We will not be applying any surfacing. Virtually no maintenance to those roads. We do have several miles of Area Service B roads here in Blackhawk County. About seven years ago, the Board of Supervisors did designate this portion of Whedon Road from Rottinghouse Road to the airport vicinity as a Class B road. Additionally, at that time, McKeller Road was also classified as a Class B road. McKeller Road is just right around the corner from Whedon Road. Those are each less than a mile in length. And we also have another mile that is classified as the Area Service B. And that's down south of Hudson on Petrie Road from Holmes Road to Acker Road. So, we have a little under three miles of Service B road here in Blackhawk County. And moving on to the Area C service roads. Again, we are required to put up a sign. This can only be, take place by resolution by the Board of Supervisors. In this case, we install a gate. The county purchases the gate, we install the gate, and then, we have notified landowners, adjoining landowners, those people affected, that there would be a gate put up. We can give keys to individuals who would like to access that or who have land behind the gate. Emergency services, the sheriff, our maintenance crews, we would all have keys as well. And we do have a little under one mile of an Area Service C road here in Blackhawk County. This is in the Janesville vicinity. It was established in the spring of two thousand and eleven. And that was primarily because the resident was experiencing dumping on that road, as well as people trespassing on their property to get to a county conservation area named Fisher Forest. And at that time, the Blackhawk County Conservation Board did support this gating of this road to restrict access back to this conservation area. There's currently a parking lot in that area, and you can walk around the gate to get to this access.
This is where the rock quarry is, is it?
No. This would be, it's on Marquee Road, which is a county-line road with Bremer and Blackhawk. Years and years ago, we had a bridge that crossed the Shell Rock River there. But that was abandoned and removed at least ten years ago. And people would continue to walk through there and drive through there and to get access to the fishing area. That is still allowed. Pedestrian access is allowed. But there is no more dumping of trash and that type of debris. And the Code of Iowa does give cities, counties, does give counties liability when we designate these roads as Area Service B and C. Says that we are not liable for injuries to any person or damage to any vehicle or equipment. Moving on to a county vacation. So, this is where the county is giving up all ownership rights to this piece of property, to this road. Again, this is codified in Iowa law. We are given pretty good guidance on this from the Iowa DOT. The public hearing process must be followed. Resolution must be passed to vacate all of it, none of it, or a portion of it, for example. We can, the county can agree to remove drainage structures, or we can leave those in place and they will just be given over to the landowners then, basically. In the past, there is court precedence that shows if people do have access cutoff, there is a provision for us to pay damages. That isn't always the case, but that there is a consideration for that in the Code of Iowa. And then, lastly, the utilities would still retain all, would still retain a permanent easement to that area if that's what they desire. We have had a recent vacation here in Blackhawk County. This was approximately in two thousand and eleven. It was a, I think this was a Class B before this happened, but you can see it was just a dirt road. There was a lot of people, excuse me, there was some mudding taking place. There was a lot of debris, garbage being dumped onto this road. The landowners came to the board or came to the engineer and asked, requested that this road be vacated. We followed the vacation process, and it was vacated about six years ago. And today, the road has been obliterated. And of course, there's farming through the road today. And at that time, in two thousand and nine, the average daily traffic on that route was twenty vehicles per day. So, just to zero in more on the road we're talking about today, this would be Whedon Road, and it's approximately from Rottinghouse Road, which is up here at the top of the page, down to the vicinity of the airport. We have done locates with our, with utilities along this corridor. As near as we can tell, there are no active utilities along this corridor. The average daily traffic count from the latest DOT count, which was in two thousand and fourteen, is approximately fifteen vehicles per day. And I also wanted to point out that the distance between Whedon Road here and Gallinvo Road, which are parallel routes, that's approximately nineteen hundred feet. So, it's much closer than our, than our one-mile grid system. Just to talk for a minute about the history of the problem, there, of course, have been numerous instances of mutters in the past. There's been a history of mutters getting out onto the airstrip and damaging, doing damage to the airport. And some of our guests could speak about that as well. So, as I said, it was vacated in two thousand and ten. Since that time, we have done virtually no maintenance on the route. Just due to the wetness of the area, a lot of trees have grown up in the area. We have done very little to cut those back, to keep those cut. On an annual basis, we're spending maybe four or five hours a year maintaining this road, approximately two hundred and fifty dollars to maintain it. And it could be more in times of flooding, for example. And I'll show you a few photos of this. So, as you know, I have sent out some letters in September. The request for the vacation, or looking at our options for Whedon Road this time, was coming from our, was coming from me, from the maintenance department, from myself. So, in response to that, I sent out letters in September wanting to gather public opinion from the residents in the area on their opinion of vacating, or what are our options on Whedon Road? I did hear back from several people. For example, Ms. Cindy Crowe, I talked to her just last week. She owns a home on Millardale Road. Her family is in the military, so she's not there all the time, but they do go back and visit frequently. She liked the idea of leaving Whedon Road open because it's a sand road. It's not as dusty as Gallinvo Road. It saves time getting to Washburn, she told me. And you would have to go out of the way. You would have to travel north on East Shallas Road and go over to two eighteen that way. She was concerned about more traffic if you did have to make that circuitous route. And then, you wanted to come back to go to Gilbertville. Then, there would be more traffic turning on Highway two eighteen at the Washburn Road intersection.
Kathy, just to interrupt a second.
Yes.
Where did you say she lived, or what is her address?
Her, her address, the home she owns is on, is at forty-six twenty-seven Millardale Court. And her daughter actually lives in the house. She herself is living in Texas now, just due to being in the military right now.
Okay, thank you.
And I have also heard back from Mary Kay Fishback and Joe Otava that they would also like to see the road left open. They express concerns about flooding. In times of flooding, they see that as a better way to leave. In times of flooding, they see that as a better way to leave the, leave their home. And they live north of the Rottinhouse-Gallinvo area. I have heard from several residents who expressed an interest in closing the road. For example, the Westers and the Jorgensons, they live south of the airport on Wyden Road. They have been impacted by the flooding, and so they, they offered good firsthand accounts of how much flooding there is during, during high water events, and I have some photos here. Of course, I've heard from the farmers who farmed that portion of Wyden Road. The Rottinhouses, they tell me that they can access their fields on the east side of Wyden Road. They tell me that that is accessible from Gallinvo Road or from Rottinhouse Road if we were to vacate the road. And then I have heard back from Mr. Gary Birch. He manages the airport, owns the airport on the east side of Wyden Road. And some of these folks are here today, and I'm sure they would like to say, say something. I also heard from Ms. Alma Huck, and she told me that in times of high water, that she, the first place she goes is the Cedar Valley Nature Trail to get to her home. She drives right up the nature trail. She would live north of, as the trail intersects Wyden Road, she lives north of that, just north of that portion. I did want to show you some photos of what Wyden Road looks like. The flooding on Wyden Road is very similar to what happens on Rottinhouse. It's coming from the east side of Wyden Road. The flooding can take place very quickly. This is one of the neighbors who gave me this account of how quickly the flooding can happen. But you can see it's so flat out there, it just inundates a lot of, a lot of the area. Inundates the hangers, the airfield in particular, as well as to the north up to Rottinhouse So this was taken in the fall of 2016. A few more photos from 2008, and you can see there's extensive flooding in that vicinity. So here's a photo of the road, and this portion is south of the hangers. This portion would remain open, so I do envision that if we did have another large rainfall event or flooding event, we would be repairing this road, in this portion of it, just because that is south of the hangar, and we know there's residents right next to this, and people need to come and go to get to the airport. Some more damage after the flooding. And this was a photo taken in, in the fall of 2016. Now, this is on the parallel route, Gallinvo, and the water's coming from, like, to the right of this road. It's coming from the Cedar River and flowing to the left towards Wyden Road. So we did receive some damage in 2016, not, not as extensive as in 2008. Here's a photo in the winter. Of course, we, we don't, as I said, we don't do any maintenance of the road. We don't plow the road north of the airport. So I would ask you for your consideration of vacation of Wyden Road. I'd like to have some of the, our guests, if they would be given a chance to.
First, if any of the board members have any questions.
The writing houses here.
I don't, I don't see them.
And the reason I ask, I believe Joe, the last two times, was in favor of not closing it, so I was curious what changed his mind, if I remember correctly.
That's correct, from what I've, from speaking with him.
And what's the benefit of closing it versus just classifying it as a C road and gating it off, and giving people the keys that would need access occasionally?
So if we consider this compared to perhaps our last area service C where we did put the gate up, that, as I said, at one time, there was a bridge at that location. It's a crossing over the Shell Rock River. It has more of a, maybe a future potential need to be used as a road again. Maybe there would be some development in that area in the future, and maybe we would find money to build a new bridge some, at some point in the future. Wyden Road, in my opinion, is a different case because we have that other road, just 2,000 feet or 1,900 feet to the east of it. They're two parallel routes. That's closer than any spacing of our roads in the county. The fact that it's so sandy, and we do, would have to do quite a bit of maintenance concerning the trees in the next few years to keep it open is, is our concern, that it's not, it's not really a needed route.
Can we have a B as C road that we don't do any of that maintenance on? If we're not required to by code?
So I guess I would consider that, the future needs for Wyden Road are that we, we don't have any future needs for Wyden Road, whereas.
Why not? Go ahead, I'll let you finish.
I guess I can, I, there's really no, right now, both sides of the road are farmed, it's so low, it's, it floods quite a bit. I can't see development or any type of future use for the, the road other than agriculture. The landowners on both sides of Wyden have told me that they have access to those fields from, from other means. So it just seems like it's not, it's not needed at this time, so, or in the future. So let's eliminate some of the nuisance, people driving in and out of there, destroying private property.
If we were to vacate it, would we be putting up a gate anyways, though?
So that's a good question. We, when we would, if we would vacate it, we would put barricades at the north and the south end, and it would look just like, for example, a dead end, for example, when our gravel roads were cut off by Interstate 380 or 20. There's large barricades at the ends of that road. That's what we would do. We would leave access, a field entrance at the north end, as well as the south end, and then we would have the barricade.
Why would we put barricades on private land?
So we would.
If we vacate it, then it's their piece of property, they can do what they want with it.
Yes, we would write the legal description so that we can put up the barric, we would have the field entrances on county property, accessible off the county road. Then we would put the barricades on county property. Then we would write the, the legal description so that the vacation started.
So would the barricades fall under the Iowa code listed for no liability under Class C, even though it's not a Class C road anymore? I guess what I'm getting at, would the county have any liability with those barricades?
I, I would say no. I mean, we have dozens of barricades at ends of roads here, or throughout Blackhawk County. I don't think our, our liability would be any more than it is with those.
So you're saying we wouldn't have any liability?
Right.
Okay. And then a couple of the other reasons, too. You cited dumping of garbage and.
Yes.
Mutters. This is Class B right now?
Yes.
So can we reason, then, that there's no dumping at all on other roads in Blackhawk County, or no mutters, only on Class B roads? Would that be a fair assumption?
So there are mutters occasionally throughout the county. Perhaps the sheriff is, is more qualified to speak on that than myself. We, the dumping of garbage, yes, that takes place.
All over Blackhawk County.
I agree.
And mutters go all over in the fields all over Blackhawk County, regardless what type of road it is.
I don't know how much they go onto private property. I don't hear about those types of instances.
Morning, board.
Morning.
Wayne Even, secondary road superintendent. That road seems to be a hotspot for the four-wheelers, mudding. It's just a good through road, so they know there's easy way in and easy way out, if they make it through.
Possibility of somebody that lives in the area?
To me, it's some of the kids maybe coming out of town, or local kids that, that know it's a good hotspot for four-wheeling.
So you don't, you don't think they're going to go around the barricade?
I don't think so, no. I mean, it's a possibility. They always seem to go around barricades wherever we put them up.
What about the barricades we had up on the road when we cemented, put that cement in, and they went right around that, back cement? So what's the difference?
They could, but if we vacate it and the farmer turns it back to farmable ground, I don't think that's going to happen.
What about, what about the lady that lives there that's got a concern about getting out during flooding? Don't we care about it?
We do, but the thing is, when it's flooding, it's raining, and when it's raining, that road is mud, and you cannot get through it. That road has been, the first eight months of this year, you couldn't get down that road. It was just mud, and the trees were bad, and you had to wait till it dried up before we could even get down.
I had quite a long visit with her, and she said that she, that's her only way out during a flood, because that, that other way. And why not, if we're looking at that, why not close Gallinvo, too? Or why aren't we looking at Gallinvo rather than this one? You said Gallinvo's dusty, this one isn't dusty.
They're both dusty. One's a dirt road, one's gravel road.
Great. Gallinvo's a gravel road that we maintain, we plow that.
So it's dustier.
Place rock.
It is dustier, but.
Is Gallinvo?
Like I say, eight, eight months out of the year, you can't get down the road. Either, you know, we have all this spring floods and, and all the rain and everything, and there's holes and dips, and it just holds the water, and we can't get rid of it. We just have to wait till it dries up before we can go in there and blade it. And my biggest thing with this whole deal, too, is that the trees in there. We need to either eradicate the trees, and if we do that, we're going to have to spend $10,000, $15,000, and I can't see the taxpayers wanting to spend $10,000, $15,000 for me to go in there and grub the trees out. And the trees are right beside the road.
If they'd have been maintained earlier, we wouldn't have to do that.
Exactly, but I'm maintaining all the other gravel roads and not the Level B.
We've, we've got time to do the ditches for other people, I only have time to take care of those trees.
I don't have the time to get it done.
Do you cut trees on other roads that are Class B?
No.
I thought we didn't do any work on Class B.
Over on McKellar Road, NutriJet's been trimming all the trees, so we haven't touched them.
Because they're going out in the field, NutriJet?
They, going out in the field is.
Their business, don't they?
Yes.
Spread out there in that area?
Yes.
Kathy, how many, you said you're going to maintain the lower half by the airport, the road? How many vehicles use that a day?
Mr. Wester, who lives on that road, just that he can answer that. The ADT map from the DOT said 15, but they do not put a, that is from extrapolation, that they get that number. They didn't put a counter across Wyden Road. The DOT doesn't put counters on every single road. They just do algorithms and come up.
Where they, where they going to? Are they using Wyden Road, that 15, or they going to the airport?
On a, on a good day, you're going to see cars going to the airport. Okay, that could possibly be the five or 10 going past the airport on a good day.
Could you please give your name?
Wayne Westers, 6911, Weeden Road.
Who is, who goes to the airport that many?
There's probably 10 airplanes out there that fly. So, but on a good day, there's one car that might come through this Level B part on a good day, unless it rains. Then you're going to see all the kids coming, and they're going to check it out. And as far as, you know, they've got it made because they got three different exits out there, so they don't have to worry about getting caught. They can just, they don't have to turn around and come back through. They've tore up the airport, they've tore up my neighbor's yards. We've got trees, makes it kind of hard for them to get into my yard.
But you honestly think this is going to stop them from tearing up yards or airports?
They don't have, they're not having out. I mean, they went over the, around the one barricade and on the cement, correct, Craig?
I don't know.
Well, you asked the county guy about that, said it was going to stop them from going around the barricades?
Yeah, what's going to stop them?
Okay, they did it one time there. Are they going to, how many times are they going to go around barricades through farmer fields? Right now, they're doing it because it is a road. That's the only reason they're using it.
What's on each side of the barricade if, if we put the barricade up?
Farmland would be there.
Okay, there's no ditch or nothing, it's just farmland?
It would be, it would be farmland.
So they'd be able to go around the barricade, and it'd be in a farmer's field?
No different than they can go around any.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. No different.
But they, but they don't. I mean, it, it's not the same. It is a road now. They can go out there and actually use it as a road, they think. As far as getting out during the flooding, if a person has an option to take a gravel road versus a mud-sand road, which road are you going to use when they both flood at the exact same time? Doesn't make sense to go down the mud and sand to me, because your chances of getting out are a whole lot less likely.
The lower half that you want to keep open, that's how much? How many feet?
About 2,000 feet.
What's that cost to maintain that yearly? Do we plow it?
We plow it. We go down, we don't go clear down, we just go to the hangar. The road would go another 1,000 feet, and we would not maintain that during the winter.
Is that the portion we had to repair in the flood in '08?
Right by the airport, we did.
How much was that? Do you have any idea, if I remember?
I did not go back and do those rock tickets.
There was probably no material that we added or anything. It was probably just taking the machine in there and pushing it back into the hole that, that it created.
And one of the neighbors, I'm not sure if it was you, Mr. Wester, you had.
One of the neighbors did say that we did, they did see the county placing some rock back on the road after the 2008 flooding. So it is possible that we did put some rock back.
Kathy, Gallinvo Road, is that a Class A road?
Yes, that, that's a normal gravel road in the county that we maintain.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on this issue?
Hi, Gary Birch, 4935 Young Road, Waterloo, and with Flyers Airfield. My biggest concern with this issue is just a safety and damage to the property, but safety issue. We have had quite a bit of experience with the, with the mutters coming in and getting onto the airfield and creating some hazardous conditions for the pilots that do fly out there. You know, if you get a rut and you hit that on landing, you can lose landing gear, and it can be a very dangerous situation. We invested several thousand dollars in concrete barriers last year to try and cut down on the problems that we've been experiencing, and it has helped, but it has not eliminated it completely, and, you know, we're going to have to look at some additional steps there regardless. But there's definitely a lot of trouble with, with the road, as was expressed previously.
So you think if this is vacated and barriers are put up, that eliminates that problem?
I think it'll definitely help. Yeah, I, I mean, no one can say with certainty what people are going to do, but certainly additional deterrence would, would be helpful. Thank you.
You got cameras out there, Gary?
We do not. You know, the neighbors that are close by keep a pretty good eye on it. In fact, we did catch a couple of kids a few years ago. You know, there was no restitution that came out of it or anything, but I don't know if they're still participating in the activities or not, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. As it pertains to Weeden Road and the activities of mudding, Weeden Road wins hands down. And the reason is, is it's the perfect combination of mud and access. So of any place in the county that we have problems with those kinds of activities, Weeden Road is the worst. I would guess, probably over the last five to seven years, 50% of all the folks that participate in the mudding activities, we end up having to extract either out of the fields, out of the roadway itself, out of the Flyers field, and they all get charged criminally. So it is a, it is an issue. It does occupy sheriff's office time in response to those kinds of activities. The fact that it's currently a Level B road does not prevent, or prevent people from accessing that. And nine times out of 10, they're accessing it when the conditions are right, to be able to participate in that kind of activity that doesn't benefit the road. in that kind of activity that doesn't benefit the road or the county. Any questions for me?
Mr. Pierce, though, thank you.
Good morning. Joe Patava, 5801 Wyden Road. I guess, I mean, I was here the last work session we had, and I'm not denying the fact that Wyden Road, at that point, floods. That's, that's a fact. And it's not always the rain in Waterloo that causes the flooding on the Cedar River. Many times, it's the rain up north, I mean, even as far as Minnesota, that affects us. But I get the fact that it very often is muddy when it floods. I, I get that. But the fact is, it's almost 2,000 feet further from the river. Our point is, it's the last chance if something would go wrong. Floods don't always come. There's a flash flood on a river like that. They, they slowly come up. I don't wanna say slowly, but slowly compared to flash flood. Gollenvale Road does flood quicker. It's much closer to the river. As far as the concern of the airport, I, I guess that, to me, that falls on, onto the airport owner to take care of your pilots landing. Most airports that I've seen have fences that surround them to protect the airport from, from such things. The mutters, I mean, I, I get that the sheriff's time is valuable, and that, you know, if someone else were to go wrong, they're tied up there. But if the county is not liable for anything that happens on a Level B road anyway, is it, does, does the sheriff have to pull them out, or can they be required to call a tow truck and pay to get their car out, and then be criminally charged for that? And I see if, if you are criminally charging people, they're, eventually, they're going to stop, or maybe there's gonna, there, there's gonna be new mutters or whatever. But, I mean, if they're getting fined hundreds or thousands of dollars, whatever the fine is, or criminally, I mean, that's gonna reduce, I mean, that's, that's why we have the sheriff's, that's why we have laws and stuff like that. That's going to reduce those kinda things. So, I guess that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to address?
You know, approximate cost difference between barricades and fencing? Are they roughly the same?
They could be roughly the same. A gate, we would buy a metal gate. That may cost five or six, $700. The barricade would be, I would think, under $500. Yeah.
So, that's more than we spent last year out there?
Yes.
We spent $250 last year to maintain it.
Approximately, yes.
So, we're gonna spend more to close it off for, because of mutters?
We, we did spend more than that on it maintaining it. That was just with the grader, going up and down it. Otherwise, we were out there with trucks and graders filling in the holes, the major holes, so we could get up and down it. So, we did spend, you know, a little more than that.
But it's the anticipated cost. You're looking for the trees and some of those things, too, as far as maintaining. A road out there is clearing those trees. You said it $10,000 to $15,000?
That's what I would say to, to grub all the trees out.
Take them out.
Is it necessary to remove the trees?
Yeah, why would you?
The trees are right next to the road, and we're supposed to have about a six-foot clear zone going through there, and we don't.
So, you only do it once a year, take care of the road once a year? What would be the problem of getting through there?
As far as grading it once a year, you mean? No, it depends on the year. I mean, if we can get in there a little more often, we blade it a little more often. It's not always just once a year.
So, the clear zone, is that a code thing?
The...
It is, but because, because it's a Class B road, we don't necessarily have to maintain the, the specified clear zone in the, the Iowa DOT design requirements.
If you vacated it, who'd you vacate it to?
So, we are, the county is on this, our road is there by permanent easement, so in that case, we, the land would revert back to the landowners on each side of the road.
What are some of the potential safety hazards for county employees, either doing maintaining or also responding to situations out there?
I don't know if there's any.
I don't think it'd be any more than what they do every day.
I wouldn't say any different than any other day.
Have we gotten any vehicles of our, stuck out there?
No, I don't.
They don't go out.
We're not mutters.
Speak for yourself.
Kathy, are any of the, are any of the residents, is this road used at all for emergency vehicles, other than sheriff?
We do not. The sheriff doesn't even go down that road.
Specifically EMS or fire?
They, they'll use Gollenvale. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use that, that passage to get to Weeden Road or back to...
No school bus.
In the carrier, and previously, the field medical EMS chief said that was a secondary access for their vehicles. In recent, there are previous problems with this road.
But if it's in a mud condition, they wouldn't use it?
No.
Those vehicles are prone to being stuck.
So, for the most part, too, I think Rotting House probably farms on both sides of the road, so I'm thinking his farm is probably what he would continue and, and do in that, that available space. Yes, he's the majority landowner on both sides of the road, and they have told me that they can access their fields from, excuse me, Rotting House on the north, and then as it comes around to Gollenvale from, and then if they were farming through that road, then, you know, they would just have a bigger field to, they could still access it from the east. Did you want to speak?
My name's Connie Patava, and I am the...
Good morning.
Good morning. The third generation, living on the Wyden Fishback Farm, and I'm here to speak for my mother, 95 years old. Not only is the road historical, I, I know that my grandfather was instrumental in helping establish the, not only the Wyden Road in that area, but also the Gollenvale Road. He petitioned to have another access for those homes over on that area. My first recollection of, of the importance of that road to my family was back in the 60s, when I was a young child, and it flooded. And the last, my dad was actively farming then and had cattle, milk cows, pigs, and my recollection was standing hand in hand with dad, watching the semi take his livestock. And the last access that they had off of that farm was straight down Wyden Road. And so, it, it, it is very important. Yes, flooding comes in many different ways. We all know that, and we all know how terrible flooding is. But when you look at the times that it actually floods, and recently, we've had, what, a 500-year flood and a 100-year flood? Those are terrible. They, not only was the county fixing holes in the road, but you should've seen the craters that were in the farm fields, that the farmers had to fix and repair from, from the swirling of, of the river that was overflowing. But it, it is the last access that we can get out of that farm. Millardale, that area of houses and people that live there, they've also come down that way, too, as a last resort to get out, or as Alma Huck said, she came down the bike trail. And so, in, in bad times, yes, it, it floods. In torrential rains, Wyden Road does, does get, there's holes in it. There's, there's different areas that are susceptible. They must be lower, that, that fill with water and, and are, are mud spots. But the rest of the time, I've used that road. I, I drive down that road, you know, frequently, and I, I travel for work, and when I come home, I'll come home that road to see mom. And so, anyway, we're, we're asking that you at least keep it as it is, as a Class B road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? We had this on just for discussion.
I was just gonna comment to Grant. I guess we had about six or seven emails that we've received in the last few weeks, too, that we can get you the names and addresses of those individuals, too, for record.
You want me to read them, or the, the names?
Oh, if you, yes, if you've got them, yeah.
They're different than what Kathy reported on?
Well...
Just get their names and addresses.
It's Alma Huck. Rebecca Hergert. Dwayne Wester. Roger Calson. Roger Jorgensen. These are all in favor of closing the road.
In addition to that, I can give you some other names. David Harms, Scott Morris.
Why don't you get me the list in a few more minutes?
Okay, will do. Thank you.
I think there was, I haven't had time to go through all the emails this morning since I was gone yesterday, but I think there were at least one that was in favor of closing emails, or in favor of keeping it open. Okay, any reports, information from the board?
I'd say I had the opportunity last week to go and tour Sunny Crest and Dubuque, and really great facility. I hadn't been there since, I think, I went with my Boy Scout troop as a kid. But one, one interesting idea that they had, I'd like to explore more, is that they don't use nursing agencies, but one of the things that they have, in addition to stuff we've talked about, is what they call a PRN pool, and that, and those are nurses that used to work at Sunny Crest, but have gone on to work at the hospitals, but they maintain a pool of them that they can call up. So, they're paying a, a lower rate than they're paying the nursing agencies, and they've got people that have experience already working there, and I, I thought it was a really, a really good idea, worth exploring.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
No other information?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.